Twenty-five steps, and they didn't have to do that.
I'd like to call the Boarder Tuesday, August 12, 2014, regular meeting of the Board of Trustees, Boarder's, please call or roll.
Adams, here. Carrara?
Here.
Lynn, here. Markley? May?
Present.
O'Connell?
Here.
Wanderly?
Here.
And the Howlins?
Here. Like to welcome everyone for coming and a special thank you to the Lincoln Way School District, High School District for providing us with these facilities. So let's begin with the pledge of allegiance. Trustee O'Connell, which allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence for Ed Myers, adjunct instructor, technical department; Ruth May, mother of Jeff May, Board of Trustees; Edmund Blowers, husband of Nippy Blowers, Finard; Josephine Jill Mitchell, mother-in-law of Judy Mitchell, Administrative Services; and Irene Lublin, grandmother of Tina Good and Missions.
Mr. Chairman, can I also ask David Hatcher?
David Hatcher is. Recognition of special guests. Were there any, Ms. Tierney?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Selective reports, approval of proclamation for Adult Education and Family Literacy Week. Daniels?
I will read the proclamation.
Okay, thank you very much.
Whereas over forty-seven thousand adults and out-of-school youth residing in the JJC District have not earned a high school diploma or GED, and whereas over seventy-eight thousand adults aged sixteen years and older residing in the JJC District are non-native English speakers, and whereas these adults struggle to secure or retain employment in family sustaining wages and are underprepared to succeed in post-secondary education or career preparation. Whereas Joliet Junior College addresses the needs of its district residents by providing adult education, literacy, and English as a second language programs and services through the Department of Adult Education and Literacy. And Joliet Junior College community wishes to recognize adult education staff, faculty, and students for their dedication and desire to enrich the communities served and to promote the vision and mission of the college in encouraging all students to obtain post-secondary education or career preparation. The National Coalition for Literacy, the Commission on Adult Basic Education, and the Illinois Adult and Continuing Education Association acknowledge Adult Education and Family Literacy Week as September 22 through 28, 2014. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, and the State of Illinois do hereby proclaim the week of September 22 through 28, 2014 as Adult Education and Family Literacy Week.
Thank you. Dr. Daniels, motion to approve.
Okay, motion?
Motion by trustee May, second by trustee O'Connell. O'Connell, please call or roll.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams? Yes. Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Recognition of retiree Mary Anna Conti. Trustee Adams, is she in the room?
No, she is not.
No, I'm interested. Just read it, trustee Adams.
Whereas Ms. Mary Anna Conti has been a loyal and dedicated full-time faculty member of Joliet Junior College from August 2000 to June 2014, for a total of fourteen years of service. And whereby, whereas Ms. Conti began her career as an adjunct instructor in the Social and Behavior Science Department, was then appointed full-time assistant professor and is retiring as an associate professor. And whereas Ms. Conti served as department chair of the Social and Behavior Science Department from 2009 to 2012. And whereas throughout her years of service, Ms. Conti has demonstrated admirable support in the ideals of education as well as for the instruction, for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves. And whereas the service performed throughout her years at Joliet Junior College has always been of the highest standard, standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence. Now thereby it be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 225, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Mary Anna Conti for her dedication, distinctive services as well as her diligence, performance, and loyalty in executing those duties as whereby stated.
Thank you, trustee Adams. Motion to approve.
I make the motion.
Motion by trustee Adams, second. Second by trustee O'Connell. John, please call or roll.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
The Howlins?
Yes. Recognition of retiree Scott Mangan. Trustee Sue Flynn, is she in the room?
No.
No. Trustee Flynn, please read the motion.
Whereas Mr. Scott Mangan has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College from April 1983 through June 2014, for a total of thirty-one years of service. And whereas Mr. Mangan has been employed in the General Maintenance Department of Facility Services for his entire career, Mr. Mangan also served as a union steward for many years. And whereas throughout his years of service, Mr. Mangan has demonstrated admirable support for the ideals of education as well as for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves. And whereas the service performed throughout his years at Joliet Junior College has always been of the highest standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District Number 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Scott Mangan for his distinguished service as well as for his diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing those duties as herein stated, adopted this twelfth day of August 2014.
Thank you, trustee Flynn. Motion to approve.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Wanderly, second.
Yes.
Second by trustee Adams. Please call or roll.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Recognition of retirement Raymond Jacobowski. Trustee Mike O'Connell, is he in the room?
Whereas Mr. Raymond Jacobowski has been a loyal and dedicated employee of Joliet Junior College from September 1992 to June 2014, for a total of twenty-two years of service. And whereas Mr. Jacobowski has been employed with Facility Services for his entire career, beginning in General Maintenance Department, and retiring in Special Maintenance. And whereas throughout his years of service, Mr. Jacobowski has demonstrated admirable support for the ideal, ideals of education as well as for the institution of Joliet Junior College and the people whom the college serves. And whereas the service performed throughout his years at Joliet Junior College has always been of the highest standard of professionalism, quality, and excellence. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Illinois Community College District 525, Joliet Junior College, Counties of Will, Grundy, Kendall, LaSalle, Kankakee, Livingston, and Cook, State of Illinois, does hereby recognize and commend Raymond Jacobowski for his distinguished service as well as for his diligence, perseverance, and loyalty in executing these duties as herein stated, adopted this twelfth day of August 2014.
Thank you, trustee O'Connell. Motion to approve?
So.
Motion by trustee O'Connell, second.
Second.
Second by trustee Herrera. John, please call or roll.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Faculty Union report. See Dr. Marsink.
Um, I'm the Hogan, treasurer of the union. Dr. Marsink's camping in southern Oregon with his brother and nephews, telling me that his nephew's one of the most energetic kids on earth, but that's because Bob never spends time with kids. He's telling me, "Your nine-year-old can't be like these boys." And I'm like, "They're all like this." Um, we have nothing to say, really. We're all, you know, school starts in less than two weeks. We're looking at it, you know, with a combination of excitement and dread. You know, teaching's like swimming in a pool. You know you'll have a good time once you get in, but you gotta talk yourself into getting in. All right, um, that's it.
Adjunct faculty union report. Dr. L. Kennedy?
Yes, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the board tonight. Although I have a very serious matter to present to you, I will be very brief. Please read and consider carefully the information that I emailed you yesterday before you decide to accept, delay, or deny the recommendation in Agenda Item 2.2.4. Although the college conducted an investigation, I believe it was flawed, incomplete, extremely one-sided. Your decision tonight may have a significant impact, negative impact, on the livelihood and reputation of the instructor involved, who's been a loyal employee since 2006. I hope that you all will take this matter very seriously.
Thank you, Dr. Kennedy. We had a request from a trustee to change the order of the agenda, so we will be having an executive session next. We will be moving into the room right next door. We will be leaving. You can stay, enjoy some of the refreshments, and we will transact business when we return from executive session. Motion to go into executive session. Make that motion? Motion by trustee May, second by trustee Wanderly. John, please call or roll.
For 2C1.
Oh, yes. For 2C1, employment, employment compensation, disqualification, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Thank you, trustee, and thank you, Ms. Tierney, for that.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes.
Motion by trustee O'Connell, please call or roll.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Motion to approve the minutes of the regular monthly meeting of June 10, 2014.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no additions or corrections, I move the minutes to approve.
Second?
I second.
Second by trustee Adams. John, please call or roll.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Communications. Ms. Tierney, were there any additional communications other than the ones provided in the board package?
No further communications, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Tierney. Public comment. Ms. Tierney, was there any requests to address the board?
No requests received.
Thank you, Ms. Tierney. Approval of the agenda, motion.
Make that motion?
Motion by trustee May, second. Second by trustee Adams. John, please call or roll.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Approval of the consent agenda, motion.
Move, Mr. Chairman, to approve. 2.1.1, 2.1.2, 2.2.1, 2.2.2, 2.2.3, 2.2.4. 241 Facility Services, 261 Food Services, 291 Reports, 4.1 Pay the Bills, 421 Electronic Attendant Solution, 422 Dishwashing Products, 423 Mowers, 424 Textbooks, 425 NellNet, 426 Contractual Service MTA, 427 Rave Wireless, 428 Digital Media, 429 Project Manager, 4.3 Treasury Report, 44 Financial Report, 45 Contract with the Architect, 46 Pool of Poisoning Water, 47 Securing Home Business, Court Policy, 9.6.1 Approval and Review of Executive Session Minutes, 9.6.2 Approval of Construction Apes from Executive Sessions. Uh, Mr. Chairman, will you add back that 4.2.9?
Okay, we have a second, Ms. Tierney? We need a second? Second by trustee Adams. John, please call or roll.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Approval of the items on the consent agenda, motion. Motion by trustee Wanderly, second.
Second.
Second by trustee May. John, please call or roll.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Item 2.1.3, President Rex's Suspension of One Administrative Staff Member, motion to approve.
Make that motion.
Motion by trustee May, second by trustee Adams. Discussion. No discussion. John, please call or roll.
May?
Yes.
O'Connell?
No.
Wanderly?
No.
Adams?
Yes.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. 4.2.9 Professional Services, Romeo Hill Campus Transformation Multi-Purpose Construction Manager, motion to approve. Move. By trustee Wanderly, second. Second by trustee O'Connell. Discussion.
I'd like our committee members to articulate why they did not choose the vendor that was ninety thousand dollars cheaper and had direct experience in building field houses. Why the other candidate was superior to that individual? Well, that's it. Had our last Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting we had. We had some people working, both of us appreciated their experience. I told Dr. Daniels and Judy Mitchell that Mike and I were going through over the criteria that was given to us and make the recommendations of the Buildings and Grounds Committee. It took a few days. By the time I called Vice President Mitchell with the final recommendation, she said that was, that was good because she'd already put in the foreign patents because she had conversation with Pat Van Dyne and Rick Lydon, and they both felt the same as Mike and I did, that one individual had no backup behind him, needed to go to get more help, so to speak, of the recommendation of the Board of the Buildings and Grounds Committee.
Previously, before we opened up the bidding again, so of course, up in time, and this man, this business, self-employed man who's starting out, has built another field house, has been in contact with that, he was fine at that point. Then all of a sudden, we reopened bidding in the theme of this one, who was much more expensive. And the only point that was ever made that different the two was the fact that this one is self-employed and had no backup. I cannot believe that a man who has his own business has no one that he can't call on to work with him, unless he's dead, you know, he's just can't have a conversation with anyone. But I don't feel that is a legitimate reason to go out and now select a much more expensive one, someone who has done a lot of construction. I looked all of his, this person that we selected, I looked up on the internet all the things that he's involved in. I just feel that we're a junior college, we're a community college, let's pick somebody halfway local and work with them.
I have a question. We had a concern about his dependability if he was ill. Did Maureen give him a bad recommendation? I know he's built a field house with the community colleges right next to us. Did they have any concerns about his dependability that they can give it to us? I'm not sure about that, that he had concerns with that. Another thing I have to mention is that there was also overtime hours figured in this individual, and there was no overtime figured for that whole person.
And I believe Pat Van Dyne did talk to Maureen Valley, and they were high on Richard. I actually was high on early on. As Bob said, we've had a working, we've had a working relationship with Gil Bane, a good one. Number two, I mean, the scary thing to me was when they said there was no backup, anybody can get in a car accident and be in hospital for months, anybody. He, to answer your question, but I've been told he had absolutely no backup, no one to come in and take over for him. And the overtime is built in there. It'd be a lot of overtime to get up to what Gil Bane was. I don't disagree with that. I think it's a safe, I felt it's a safer route to go. I think he's got two good candidates.
Any other questions or discussions? John, please call or roll.
Wanderly?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Carrara?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
May?
No.
O'Connell?
Yes.
And the Howlins?
Yes. Reports. Representative of the JJC Foundation, I have no report for this evening. ICCTA Representative, trustee May?
Yes, there will be an ICCTA meeting in September in Bloomington, if anybody wants to go. And our ACCT meeting's going to be in Chicago at the end of October. Just a note, they're down to their last ten percent of rooms available, so if you have not made a decision to go, better make it quick or you may not get a room. Because they're going to go relatively quickly. It's going to be one of their best attended conferences they ever can have. It's going to be an interesting year in the General Assembly. By all accounts, at the end of the year, there will be a seven billion dollar deficit. In order to balance the deficit, they would have to restore the five percent income tax plus tax pensions to equal seven billion dollars. The likely scenario is neither of those things are going to happen, and then it's going to be convenient because that will create chaos, which may influence the Supreme Court on pensions and in terms of declaring an emergency. So it's not going to be a pretty session. It doesn't appear to be. To cut seven billion dollars from the budget is going to be extremely painful. I mean, you'll see closers of prisons. I would be surprised if they ended up closing universities and so forth. They've set as many as ten thousand employees would have to be cut, state employees would have to be cut, in seven billion dollars. So in the past, in my experience, you know, they've either had to raise money or find ways to deal with the budget, and they always came up with some kind of a trick to avoid it, and they did it again this year. But from what I understand, there are tricks. There's nothing else they can do. Plus, they have a governor candidate that's on record that wants to make what he says are cuts, and he's likely to be elected. So he's probably going to get his wish, and then he's going to have to deal with it because the consequences are going to be much, much, much worse than the taxes are. And we're just going to have to pay attention in light of the situation. I report.
And trustee May, student trustee, Mr. Herrera.
This is the last meeting of the summer, so I promise, next month, there's going to be more activities, more things going on. Student government and PTK, President Kappa, went to the POP Student Leadership Institute at Heartland Community College. Pamdill, they hosted a workshop there, and I asked a lot of the students some feedback, and they said it was a lot of fun, but it was a long day because the truck ended up breaking down because of the alternator. So it was a really long day, but overall, they said they had a lot of fun and they enjoyed their time. And most of them were experiencing that for the first time as well. And then another event that happened was the Latinos Unidos NCLR Conference. NCLR stands for National Council of La Raza, and it was in Los Angeles. So a total of eight students, three advisors went on this trip. And I'm not going to lie, it was just me and my friend Aldo. We were the only guys. Oh, I'm sorry, it was ten students, and so it was two guys and eight girls, and it was a handful to handle. As you can see, they wanted to be stars, and they went onstage and sat down and took a picture. Good thing they didn't get kicked out. And then we took a picture with the president of NCLR, so it was a really remarkable experience. Some of the workshops, they had workshops for advisors, teachers, or parents that wanted to learn more. They had for nonprofit, affiliate management, American healing, community and family wealth building, education, entertainment, and media, health workshops, Latina perspective, STEM, workforce development, and then the Leaders Summit, which was for fourteen-plus year, fourteen or twenty-six-year-olds that were in high school or going to college. And they learned about history and culture, growing and advancing, and that talked about when it comes to college and succeeding in college and even gaining professional skills to get a good job placement. And then there was networks and organizing, service and responsibility, and STEM. And I want to quickly talk about a workshop that I went to, which covered service and responsibility. I met a guy named Sammy Nunez, and he won the 2010 California Peace Prize, and his story kind of was a reflection of mine and what I had to go through growing up. kind of was a reflection of mine, and what I had to go through growing up. I know growing up in Chicago, I felt, um, I had no really, I didn't really have any support from family or the community. All I had was my friends, and I really grew up with any role models, and I know, and a quote that I'll never forget was from Tupac that he stated was, "No one knows my struggle, they only see the trouble. Not knowing it's hard to carry on when no one loves your, when no one loves you. Picture me inside the misery of poverty. No man alive has ever witnessed struggles, I survived." So when we, when I talk about that, I, I see, growing up, we didn't really have any support because we were seen as troublemakers and we're not going to change. And when I mean that, I'm talking about minorities and, um, those students that had to go through struggles, and I know this summer was one of the best summers I ever experienced because I got to experience this, going to NCLR, going to Springfield for the trustee conference. I know that come, experiencing all this, I know I'm going to give back to JJC, and I know I definitely want to get involved in the community and have JJC's face as the community when it comes to mentoring, when it comes to helping out, having food drives, and having events. I know, um, I've been volunteering for a soccer organization that helps at-risk youth. So we're doing a lot to teach them leadership skills, teach them, show them the right path to go to. Um, and I know coming to JJC, uh, when I, actually, when I went to high school, I, the only method, the only goal I had was to graduate, that's all I felt, that's all the atmosphere I, I went through. And now coming to JJC, I know I want to graduate, I want to do more, I want to transfer and get a bachelor's. And I want to end with a quote from Kennedy, "All of us do not have equal talent, but all of us should have an equal opportunity to develop those talents." And I think we should remember, we tend to forget that this year is the 50th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act. So I think we should continue to give equal opportunity to all those individuals, no matter their background. We're all human beings. Thank you. Oh, really, my bad. Really quick, sponsors, thank you to the foundation, for the Awards of Excellence grant, Officer Student Activities awarded us with $1,000 scholar, um, fund to go to NCLR, and also Officer Multichoice Student Affairs, Latinos Unidos fundraising, and out of pocket from us, the students, which wasn't that much, so, okay.
Thank you, Brian. Buildings and Grounds Committee reports. Trustees Wonderlick and O'Connell.
First, I request next meeting that we go on before Brian, that's what I have. Good job. Uh, city, city center, I'll just kind of highlight some of the things. City Center corn shell project is complete. Oilers are installed, completely installed at Romerville Campus. The rebuilt exterior stays, stairs of A and S Building are expected to be done before classes start, I assume this week they'll be done, hopefully. Construction project manager, we talked about, I guess the big one in the meeting, Brian took up a half hour, is Dominic, they came in with the interior setup, and I got to give a little credit as far as, it looks like they've got a lot of people involved. A lot of changes were made, a lot, that made a lot of sense, just like the ice carving, went from the third floor down to the first floor so they could get it in quick, and the meat, if I remember right, the meat carving, they moved that to an area where it wasn't around a lot of people, get to it quick. Just made a lot of sense, things that went on there. Uh, so that, that was good, and that's basically it. Bob, anything else? I just kind of highlighted some things. This is for you.
Thank you. Sustainability Committee report. Trustee Glenn.
Actually, my report is brief, and it's not because school's mostly closed in the summer, it's because, um, the entire sustainability committee's been working on their separate teams all summer, so I'm going to keep you in suspense until next month, when we have finished our individual projects, so stay tuned.
Thank you, trustee Glenn. President's report. Dr. Daniels.
Good evening, everyone. As, even though we've had, uh, summer-type weather and, um, summer school, we've been very busy planning for fall semester, and a very busy area is student development, and they've been, um, working on a call campaign that I wanted to share with you. I don't have a clue. Um... Well, I'll, uh, sorry about that. That's all right. Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. There we go. Phew. Student Development put out a call for volunteers to help with the call campaign. They've been doing it, uh, for, I believe this is the third year, and it gets bigger and better every year. Over two days, August 5th and 6th, volunteers came together to call students who hadn't registered yet, um, for fall semester, and they made a total of 2,661 calls, and still going on now, but in that two-day marathon, and so, just one of the great ideas and things that are going on to help get our students registered for fall semester. So thank you very much to all the volunteers and for this great effort of one of many things that are going on. So besides that great activity, we took some time out to tour our Illinois representative, Darlene Singer, who was the invited guest of our trustee Barbara Adams, and we had a great time introducing her to our campus and, and showing her highlights of our facilities. I wanted to share with you some parts of the building. We talk a great deal about buildings on campus, but we have several smaller projects that are just as important, and one was the U.S. Bank, and having a ribbon cutting. As you all know, U.S. Bank contracted with us to have a bank on our facilities, and here it is, a great picture of it, and their ribbon cutting ceremony is 2:00 on August 26th, so I hope that anyone who is in the area will come out and join us and enjoy cake and celebrate having the bank. And part of their contract is to provide finance education for our students, so it's a great partnership. Another area on campus that we're unveiling this fall is the Tutoring and Learning Center. This is a, a remodeled space, and I want to thank Administrative Services for pulling this together. This is a great use of some of the space on our campus, and we are having a special cer, opening ceremony at 2:00 on September 17th to recognize the opening of this area. The Tutoring Center was in a much smaller space, they were cramped, we pulled together our, uh, different areas of tutoring into one, um, localized space so that it can be managed better, more efficiently, and actually seat more students. And on that same day, we're also opening the Veterans Center, again, a reorganized, repurposed space at the college, down front on the, on the glass mall area, and we're anticipated, great anticipation of the opening of the Veterans Center. And that opening ceremony is 1:00 PM on Wednesday, September 17th. So Veterans Center at 1, and Tutoring and Learning Center at 2. And so hopefully you can come out and join us and help celebrate the opening of these great spaces on campus. We also did some spruce it up around campus. This is the Student Activities Welcome Center. It was looking pretty dilapidated, and so Dr. Mitchell and I took a walk, and we looked at it, and we said, well, I think we can do something with this. And so the great Administrative Services people redesigned this and, and made it bright and shiny, so all ready for our students to come back in the fall and welcome them back at Students, Student Activities. And that's the end of my report. I do want to welcome everyone to the opening week, um, session starting next week. The board members have a schedule that I passed out with your materials, so you're welcome to come to any of the sessions. General session is on Wednesday at 8:30 in the theater, 8:30 and 10:30, two different sessions. I hope to see you out there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Daniels. Chairman's report. I'll just follow up. I'll be at the opening session to welcome faculty and staff, that on behalf of the trustees. And that last year, it's, I think most chairs, enjoy that opportunity, and I'll continue with that tradition. Do we have a need for another executive session?
No.
If we do not, motion to adjourn. Motion by trustee, uh, trustee Herrera, second.
Second.
Second by trustee May. Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye, proposed, being adjourned. Thank you, everyone.